Came here in 1986 to run it for myself in October. I signed the papers when I was owner of the Red Barn Incorporated. People come in here for the experience, more so than I think anything else. And they love the fact that somebody's actually taking the time to listen. Find that balance between doing what you love, that isn't really work, that might pay the bills, and, more importantly, can resonate with people and actually to some extent, help people. That's pretty rewarding. Without my customers, I would be doing what I don't love, guaranteed.
Good evening. Welcome to a regularly scheduled meeting of the Waterville City Council. If anybody needs an agenda, they're in the plastic sleeve out back. And before we get started, I'll have our chairman please stand and lead us to the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the light of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
First up, I guess, is Patty with administration of the votes.
Good evening. If I could ask Councilor White, Councilor Mayhew, and Councilor Tate, please come forward in front of the podium here to administer the oath. Congratulations. Please raise your right hands and repeat after me. I state your name.
I solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully discharge. Faithfully discharge.
To the best of my abilities.
The best of my abilities.
The duties incumbent upon me.
The duties incumbent upon me.
As a city councilor.
As a city councilor.
For the city of Waterville.
For the city of Waterville.
Thank you. Congratulations. Congratulations, ma'am.
Great. Without doing any campaigning. You've got to step it up.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I Nicholas Isgro.
I Nicholas Isgro.
Do swear.
Do swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So long as I shall continue.
So long as I shall continue.
A citizen thereof.
A citizen thereof.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I Nicholas Isgro.
I Nicholas Isgro.
Do swear.
Do swear.
That I will faithfully discharge.
That I will faithfully discharge.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
The two duties incumbent upon me.
The duties incumbent upon me.
As mayor.
As mayor.
According to the Constitution.
According to the Constitution.
And laws of the state.
And laws of the state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you.
I guess next is election of a council chair.
I'd like to nominate Steve Soule.
How does this work? Do you see there's any other nominations?
Any other nominations?
Any other nominations? All those in favor? Looks like unanimous. Congratulations, Steve.
Thanks.
And I guess before we go any further, I have a proclamation to read. And this is declaring January 21st to 27th Waterville School Choice Week in conjunction with National School Choice Week. Whereas all children in Waterville should have access to the highest quality education possible, and whereas Waterville recognizes the important role that an effective education plays in preparing all students of Waterville to be successful adults, and whereas quality education is critically important to the economic vitality of Waterville, and whereas Waterville is home to a variety of high-quality public and non-public schools from which parents can choose for their children in addition to families who educate their children at home, and whereas educational variety not only helps to diversify our economy and enhance the vibrancy of our community, but is also an integral part of our nation's heritage and values. Whereas Waterville has many high-quality teaching professionals in all types of school settings, including public, religious, and homeschooling, who are committed to educating our children, and whereas School Choice Week is celebrated across the country by millions of students, parents, educators, schools, and organizations to raise awareness for the need for effective educational options, now therefore I, Nick Isgro, Mayor of Waterville, on behalf of the city council, do hereby recognize January 21st to 27th, 2018, as Waterville School Choice Week, and I call this observance the attention of our citizens. Next up is community notes. Community notes is a time where if anybody has something that they would like to say or speak about that is not currently scheduled on the agenda tonight, now would be the time to do it. And we just ask that you come to the podium and state your name and what it is you have to say and where you're listening.
My name is Scott McAdams, representing the Waterville Community Land Trust. I'm the board of directors. Just like to kind of give kind of an end-of-the-year review of everything, the good things that have been going on with the land trust. First of all, as you know, we, if you don't know, but if you're new, we've hired a part-time employee. We actually did an interview process, and we actually saw some very great candidates. But we hired, her name's Meg, Bernier Boyd is our, she's doing a lot of kind of behind-the-scenes development stuff for us, kind of faceboard, kind of stuff that we can't, most of us can't get to, and she knows a lot more than we do. The next thing is this year, we were actually lucky to receive a grant, and it actually allowed us to purchase some more homes, which we actually did use some of the money to purchase a couple homes. We actually were able to purchase 232 Water Street from the city of Waterville. The house was demolished by the city using funds from the South End Neighborhood Associations, I think it's Capital Improvement Fund, or what is it? I can't remember. Jackie knows more. The fund that's...
South End Capital Improvement Fund.
The South, okay. That's what I thought of. And we actually had plans, that property is actually going to be turned into a park. We're actually in the kind of the early developmental stages of that, so we hope to have more info in the spring. We actually purchased the house next to it, which was 226 Water Street. That building is actually demoed by Central Main Disposal, and we actually have plans, hopefully, for that property. Again, we're going to wait till probably the spring. And I encourage you, if anybody has not actually gone down to see that chunk of land where the two houses were, go down and look at it. Now that it's all open, it's beautiful, you can see the river, and when it's a park, it's going to make a nice little park, little park for anybody who wants to walk down there. You can just go down there and just relax. But like I said, that's in the early stages. Kobe College actually gave us several truckloads of gravel from the new fieldhouse project. We were grateful to get that, and that was actually used to, the two properties, to level the slope off, make it safe. Actually, instead of a drop-off, it's now just a nice gradual level even slope. 181 Water Street, our first house we purchased and renovated is still up for sale. If you know anybody who's interested, again, contact Century 21, Sorette, and ask for Jill Hewitt. She's our realtor who's helping us. We'd also like to give a big thank you to everybody who contributed or in some way to help out with the 226-232 Water Street project. It was with the city of Waterville, Department of Public Works, the city manager, the city council, Central Main Disposal, the South End Neighborhood Association, Kobe College, Advance One, and most of all, the residents of Lower Water Street, who kind of put up with us for a few days, bringing in trucks and trucking stuff out and having big dump trucks drive through there for two days, bringing in truckloads of gravel. I also want to mention that the, I forgot to mention, I seem like I'm running notes together, the 226 Water Street, the fence posts that were there, there were fence posts were actually pulled out by Central Main Disposal and were given to the gentleman who lives across the street. So he's going to use those for a project, he's doing a shed or, but some of that was actually reused, which was able to go to one of the residents. And lastly, I just want to say that we look forward to working with the city of Waterville and the citizens of Waterville 2018 on some of our projects, and we plan on involving the people of the city and the area. Hopefully, when we start in the spring, putting more of a bigger, better plan together for our park on Water Street. Any questions or comments?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else for community notes?
Julian Payne, Word 5. I'd just like to thank Public Works for giving up their Christmas, plowing the roads. As I was snow blowing, I realized that they were not getting Christmas Day off. I think it's going to be a really good year, starting off good, because it's been one year since I last spoke at a council meeting, so things are looking up. Thank you.
Anybody else for community notes?
I'd just like to point out that on WAVI-TV tonight, they did a report on the effectiveness in diffusing situations to Waterville police. It was very well done. And my chair's collapsing.
You were just elected the chair.
Don't you have the best chairs?
Weight of responsibility.
Senator Dupont, can I see?
No, no, no.
Is there anybody else for community notes? All right. Next, we have disclosure of conflict of interest. Is there anybody on the council who feels they have a conflict of interest with any of the votes that are occurring here tonight?
I will be recusing myself from Resolution 14.
Guess that's it. There is no auditor's report. I guess that's been postponed again. Mike, do you want to give us the date?
The 19th, wait, 16th is our next meeting. So the auditor's report will be next meeting.
Next, we have approval of the consent agenda. Can I get a motion for the approval of the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Unfinished business ordinance 192, 2017.
Moved to read by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
An ordinance providing for amendment to zoning.
Moved to adopt.
Second.
Any discussion? Can I get a roll call, please, Patty?
Councilor Soule.
Yes.
Councilor White.
Yes.
Councilor Lessing.
Yes.
Councilor Mayhew.
Yes.
Councilor Champagne.
Yes.
Councilor Tate.
Yes.
Councilor Dupont.
Yes.
Vote seven in favor and zero opposed.
Next is order 196, 2017.
Moved to read by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
An order providing for approval of four minutes.
Moved to adopt.
Second.
Any discussion? Take a roll call, please.
Councilor Soule.
Yes.
Councilor White.
Yes.
Councilor Lessing.
Yes.
Councilor Mayhew.
Yes.
Councilor Champagne.
Yes.
Councilor Tate.
Yes.
Councilor Dupont.
Yes.
Vote seven in favor and zero opposed.
Next, order 197, 2017.
Moved to read by title only at all.
Second.
All in favor?
An order providing for acceptance of donation for Riverwalk.
Moved to adopt.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Can I get a roll call, please?
Councilor Soule.
Yes.
Councilor White.
Yes.
Councilor Lessing.
Yes.
Councilor Mayhew.
Yes.
Councilor Champagne.
Yes.
Councilor Tate.
Yes.
Councilor Dupont.
Yes.
Vote seven in favor and zero opposed.
New business, we have Resolution 14, 2018.
A resolution providing for appointing citizens to various boards and committees. Be it resolved by the city council of the city of Waterville acting as municipal officers as follows: Whereas citizens have been solicited to submit applications of interest to fill seats on various boards and committees, and whereas Mayor Isgro has conducted interviews with most applicants, now therefore be it resolved that citizens are appointed to fill seats on various boards and committees as detailed on the attached list.
Okay, motion to adopt?
Moved to adopt.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
And at this time, I'll head to the podium again and call out the folks that have been appointed.
Great.
Okay, so I'll ask the appointees to come up to the podium here, and I'll do a mass oath for everyone. Airport Advisory Committee, Dan Lowell, Robert Veer, Zachary Bickford. Board of Assessment Review, Brandon Gilli. Board of Zoning Appeals, Dan Lowell, Brandon Gilli, and Eric Poirier. Eric's here. Kennebec Sanitary Treatment District Trustees, Thomas Shattuck. Planning Board, Tom Nail. Public Library Trustees, Anna O'Keefe. TIF Advisory Committee, Scott Jones, Chris McMorrow, and Eric Poirier. Voter Registration Appeals Board, Kim Lane, and Roger Collins. Waterville Housing Authority, Nancy Emery. I don't see Nancy here. And Waterville Sewerage District Commission, Percy Monte Smith. Okay. Hello, all. If I could ask you to raise your right hand, and let me grab my oath. I apologize. I state your name.
I solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear. That I will faithfully discharge.
Faithfully discharge.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
The duties incumbent upon me.
The duties incumbent upon me.
As a member of the committee.
As a member of the committee.
To which I have been appointed.
To which I have been appointed.
Thank you. Congratulations.
A resolution providing for authorizing a special municipal election to be held on March 13, 2018. Be it resolved by the city council of the city of Waterville acting as municipal officers as follows: That the city council hereby authorize a special municipal election to be held on March 13, 2018, as follows. Referendum question number one. You approve the termination of Alternative Organization of Structure 92, also known as the Kennebec Valley Consolidated Schools, AOS, in its inter-local agreement in accordance with a plan of termination approved by the AOS 92 School Board, the Waterville Board of Education, and the Main Commissioner of Education. Be it further resolved that the single polling location will be at the Waterville Junior High School, 100 West River Road, and be it further resolved that polls will be opened from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m.
Moved to adopt.
Second.
I would just note that I did talk with Thomas College about the possibility of using their location simply for the continuity of having voters go to the same location. Unfortunately, on this short notice, they already have their spaces booked and couldn't accommodate us on such short notice. They have committed, however, to an ongoing relationship for June elections. We know the dates for several years out until I retire. I figured them out. And for November as well. So for the next 10 years or so, we're committed, we're committed to Thomas College. But for this small election, the school was very accommodating, so try to get the word out to residents in your area, anyone you speak with. We'll try to do some advertising, but that's expensive in the newspaper, but get the word out as much as possible. We'll be entering through the side entrance where the buses park. They're going to try to move things out of the way so that we have a little bit more parking, and we'll be entering right in through the gym, and they'll have gym activities in another site within the junior high for that day. So thank you to the, you know, folks at the junior high school for accommodating us, and we look forward to an ongoing great relationship with Thomas College as well.
Any questions on this discussion? All in favor? All right, since Patty, you had something for them to sign on this, is that correct?
Oh, yes. I'm passing down the warrant calling the special election, so just pass it along and help us to sign it, and then just return it to me afterwards. Thank you.
All right. Last, under new business, is Resolution 16, 2018.
A resolution providing for authorizing renewal of a special amusement license to VFW Forrest J. Pear, Post Number 1285, doing business as Forrest... VFW Forrest J. Pear, Post Number 1285. Be it resolved by the city council of the city of Waterville acting as municipal officers as follows: That the city council hereby authorize the issuance of a special amusement license to VFW Forrest J. Pear, Number 1285, 51 Water Street.
Moved to adopt.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Well, I'm giving up my time under the manager's report tonight to Randy Marfield. Randy's going to do a quick PowerPoint presentation and allow for us plenty of time for questions about the airport operation. It's part of our plan to try to bring in the department heads every meeting or so. Just to give you an update, we had Public Works already, airport, we'll do fire, police. It's an extra chance for the council to hear about whatever operation it is and where the budget stands, things like that. Ready? All right. Jackie knows where the lights are.
So what I prepared for you tonight is basically a financial snapshot of the first two quarters of our fiscal year. In the first graph, we got total sales to date. Now, that is one of those graphs that's kind of hard to really use well because there's a lot of variables in that. Notice, in 2011, we had about $220,000 of revenue, while in 2017, it's about the same. However...
Randy, could you pull it back, maybe make that screen a little bit bigger? Especially those of us with old eyes. Or even a little bit more.
Oh, is that better?
Yeah.
Okay. So we're actually doing better. And the reason why, if we break it down, we're actually keeping more of that $222,000 that we generated for revenue. How we've done that, well, the cost of jet fuel, which is about 55% of our overall sales, has gone down by $1.15 a gallon since 2011, while at the same time, our profit margin has increased 35 cents. That's a 20% increase with a 27% decrease in the cost. And that translates over into we're selling more gallons for less money and keeping more of it. Now, we've seen a 30% increase in fuel sales in our jet fuel, which is the blue line on the second graph, from 2011 to 2017. Now, you'll see there's an anomaly in 2013, and that was when Estes was closed for about two months for the reconstruction. And then you'll see our dip in 2014, 15, where we ended the fiscal year and began the next fiscal year with our closure, and those were our busiest months. But if you were to take those anomalies out, you'll see 30% increase in the overall amount of fuel sold. At the same time, how we're doing that is we're tracking what airplanes are taking on fuel and how much fuel. We've done that by, on an average, aircrafts are uploading about 300 gallons back in 2011. And we've increased by about 10 gallons. Now, that's not a lot. However, that does make up a 5% increase. And when you add a 5% increase in upload to the next one, which is how many planes are actually uploading, now back in 2015, before we did our runway reconstruction, we were only laying 65% of the aircraft uploading fuel. So we had a 5% increase in the amount of airplanes taking fuel that land, and a 5% increase in the amount of fuel that they increased. But the most impressive one of all is how many planes we're landing now. We have seen an increase of 47 jets in the first quarter of this year than we did in 2015 and any other year, really. But it's not just the fact that we're landing more airplanes and we're uploading more fuel per aircraft and we're receiving more revenue for that fuel per aircraft, but we're also charging our other services adequately. So after we did the runway reopening and we got everything situated, and we've had all the wonderful equipment that we've been able to get through on, you'll see a 1,200% increase in the fees that we associate with aircraft landing in Waterville. So a $9,400 increase from 2011 to 2017, and that has no overhead per se. That goes straight into our budget. So on my jet fuel, when we buy a gallon, we're making a percentage back. That's 100% going back into our revenue. The equipment that I mentioned, the lab services, the ground power services, the aircraft de-icing services, those are all services that we provide, and that has helped us actually achieve more traffic through our facility. In the winter months, the aircraft can't land, we aren't able to service them properly so they don't freeze, or if they get frost on their wings, they can't fly. Now, we can take the liquids off, we can keep them warm, and we can deice them. And at the same time, as part of our FBO services, as you see in the bottom right picture, we still have a hangar where we cook jets, and that's $350 per night for heated hangar. One of the things that we talked about in the last council meeting was a notice proceeding issued to STANDTEC for snow removal equipment, and I want to take the opportunity to express the importance of snow removal equipment at the airport. If you were to get off I-95 onto KMD and you were to travel all the way to Silver Street, all Silver Street, the entire concourse, and then from Silver Street, the concourse all the way to Public Works, if you were to go curb to curb on that entire route, that is the same amount of snow that we have to remove with one truck, one pickup, and one snow blower. And we do that every storm. While we can't leave the snowbanks on the side, the snow blower is a critical piece of equipment because snowbanks are hazardous to aircraft. They don't tend to land well when there's snowbanks, they can't turn, what have you. This particular snow blower is one that was purchased back in 2002 as part of a state bidding process. There were five that were received in the state of Maine for the airports. We are the last airport using that one. And the reason why is because it's so expensive to maintain. We've got about $45,000 of maintenance in that since it was purchased in 15 years ago. And it's not getting any cheaper. The parts are even harder to get. If we can't get them, we have to have them manufactured, and that's not cheap. One of the other AIP projects that we talked about in the last meeting was the grubbing and grading of Parcell 1 and 2 depicted here on the map. While we were at the grubbing and grading, we thought that it would be best to do some additional tree removal, so we have cut in roadway from the end of the airport, 100 foot swath down right through to basically where the number two is, and that will eventually leadway to the roadway going through. And all the money that's being taken in from harvesting, that will go towards the future developments and permitting that we're going to need to pursue that project going on. We also started clearing trees on parcel three, both for obstruction reasons and secondly for a potential project that we're coming up. Figures for us. Last but not least, what I wanted to leave you with is that on March 28th, from 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., we will be doing a blood drive at the Waterville Airport in our ceiling hangar. So if you would like to sign up to donate blood, bloodcross.com, or we take blood clumps as well, and we will be raising money as well. We'll have some bake sale stuff going on and other options to raise money so we can purchase batteries for AED and pads and whatnot. So all in all, in summary, we're landing more airplanes, we're charging more per airplane, they're uploading more fuel, and all's good. So I'm at it. I'll take any questions down.
Thank you, Randy. Could you go back to the slide that shows the three parcels?
Sure.
I just wanted the council to understand that this is something that was talked about, we don't often get to see it so well. I hope I could reach. Here's the end of Mitchell Road here, and we've often talked about... Here's the end of the Mitchell Road here, and we've often talked about joining it to the end of the airport road, which you see up in the very top part of the screen. So what Randy mentioned is that when we had the clearing work done on these two parcels, a right-of-way roadway was cut all the way to the end of that road. So if in the future, the city ever has the funds to develop that connection from the airport road to the Mitchell Road, hence to the Web Road, it would make for a very, very, very important connection to that part of town from KMD. Because right now, if you want to get to the Web Road, as you all know, you've got to go to the West River Road.
With the traffic road exchange now being in, is the road connecting that to the Web Road?
Right. So I think this is very much a long-term strategic project to make that connection, but, you know, in the future, it could end up being a very important thing for the city. At least now, the right-of-way is cut.
How wide? 100. Between 80 and 100.
Between 80 and 100 foot wide strip has been cleared of trees, so you can at least now go onto the site and see how that connection would be made. I don't remember the length of it. Did we ever measure the length of it? No. We do have an estimate for what it would cost to prepare that.
I have a quick question. First of all, thank you very much. It's great to see how well you're doing. I was wondering if you had an explanation for the increase in the amount of planes coming? Are you doing different kinds of advertising, or is there...
Great question. No, we have not advertised.
Okay.
So imagine what we would do if we did advertise.
Okay.
So for years and years, they always ask me, you should advertise. No, we're not ready, we're not ready. We don't have the runways. Well, now we have the runways, and then we have the equipment, now we have properly trained staff, and we have a welcoming building. So we have all of the things now that have made it so that people will be willing to come to Waterville. So I think that's one of the reasons. You can pick one or pick them all, as to why we're seeing an increase in traffic. But also, you know, as things happen and continue to develop in the community, as Kobe starts their project for the...
Dorm.
Athletic complex, right? So that's only going to increase traffic in the airport. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Just curious if, like, commercial-type flights would come in, like, something like Cape Air, like, where that's offered out of Augusta? Is that in the long-term plan for the LaFleur Airport, not so much, or...
We will be geared closer than we ever have been to be able to see a service like that, or with that type of service comes a significant amount of expense. And there isn't necessarily a lot of money to go around and offset that expense from the federal level. Actually, as a matter of fact, what we're seeing is that the commercial service airlines that are smaller like that are starting to get smaller and smaller and less and less. Where our niche is, is in the private aviation supporting the business sector, you know, of the region, you know, the closest runway to the Sugarloaf region, the Range, that can receive jets.
Candy, can you tell us what might happen on Parcel 3?
Am I out of liberty to say?
Well, yeah.
No, I really wouldn't now.
When the solar company came to talk to us back in the summer...
Cat's out of the background?
Yeah.
Okay. So Parcel 3 is part of the solar project. We have 25 acres that's completely wooded right now, used to, you know, runs a property that was acquisition by the city a number of years ago for obstruction reasons. The land is essentially useless to the airport, so what we're working to do is we're releasing, or getting the federal government to release the aeronautical requirements on that property so that we can then lease the land to the solar company, and that will generate a certain amount of money as revenue for the airport and utilize land that we can't otherwise utilize.
And the city's old landfill site is on, on the other side of the Web Road, almost directly across from that parcel.
Go ahead, Nancy. Do you have a, you mentioned that the profits were somewhat due to the fuel being lower in cost. Is there a savings portion on that budget to put money in should one year fuel be more expensive? And also, any capital savings, money put by for this snow remover that might be replaced soon?
There isn't, in that essence, no. But we, you know, going over, so if we're selling more fuel, we're making more money. So, but we have to buy more fuel, so it kind of does one of those things. So if we sell less than it does her, then we're not spending as much either.
Right. But I mean, the cost of fuel, if it rises one year...
We pay very, very close attention. We're only buying 8,000 gallons at a time, so while we may sell tens of thousands of gallons, it's a smaller impact, so we can adjust to it, so it's not terribly critical. And to answer the secondary question, we do have a strategic plan on helping fund the upcoming projects that we asked the council to approve. And thank you, my new court advisory council members, for representing today.
Motion to adjourn.